The session is called to order. Please rise for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, peras ang silang anan. Alang ng puso sa kitik mo'y buhay. Lupang hiniram, kuya ka na magiting. Sa manlulupi, di ka pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa langit mong paghahaw. May ilang ang tula at awit sa paglayang nilamahan. Ang isap ng wata at mo'y kagumpay naratingin. Ang pituwing at araw niya kailan, ang may magigiling. Lupan ang maraw ng war, aming pagsita. Buoy ay laki sa kitik. Aming likayan dapat may mahapin at mamatay ng daring sayo.
Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the role of the members.
Secretary General is directed to call the role of members.
Role call of members. Honorable Representatives: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Ako, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansha, Assistio, Ataidya, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskuk, Bautista, Bautistaling, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondo, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Bukain, Bulut Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tunggalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Huango Jaime, Ko Huango Mark, Colada, Culyantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Dagoop, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayang Hirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Di Maporo Muhammad Kali, Di Maporo Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian Paul, Ekleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo Chan, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garim, Gasataya, Gato, Goed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Wiko, Dintu, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga Ara, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Owen, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libana, Limgay Tiong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayak, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marco Leta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marinio, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Misai, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ong Tuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Penya, Pimentel, Plaza, Lito, Premisha Sagabas, Umaren, Uno, Kimbo, Rama, Rekto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Cholo, Reyes, Trilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yeloyo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamari, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbango, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulub, Silverio, Singson Reshel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maica, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Shai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Tiyanko, Tien, Tolentino, Tulfo Juseling, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Totor, Ti, Umalin, Unabya, Ungab, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Bergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villianueva, Villiar, Villiarasa Suarez, Villiarica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap Kristyantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Giselle Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 311 members responded to the call. With 311 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a call. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the deferment of the approval of the journal of the previous sessions.
There is some motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as messages, communications, and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill 7420, Creating the Philippine Air Force Authority by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization and the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 7421, Providing for Modernization Funding to the Pivox by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 7422, Amending Title VI of the Family Code by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 7423, Recognizing the Capacity of the Filipino Spouse to Remarry When Either Spouse Has obtained a Foreign Traditionally of Absolute Divorce by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 7425, Converting the LTO Extension Office in Nagillion La Union into a Class C District Office to be known as the LTO District Office of Nagillion by Representative Garcia Dante.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 7427, Expanding the National Feeding Program to Include UnderNorish Children in Secondary Schools and Mandating the Procurement from Small-Scale Farmers in the Implementation of the National Feeding Program by Representatives Mercado Revilla, Revilla Brian, and Revilla Ramon Cholo.
To the Committee on Basic Education Culture.
House Bill 7428, Providing for the Construction of the Tubay Kabad Baran Coastal Road in Agusan dal Norte with a Tubay Bridge as a Major Component of the Project by Representative Corvera.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 7429, Establishing a Forensic Database in the Philippines by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 7430, Strengthening the Mount Apo Natural Park by Representative Kawagdan.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 7431, Increasing the Capacity of the AMI Pakpak Medical Center, Upgrading Service Facilities and Professional Healthcare Services, Authorizing the Increase of its Medical Workforce Complement by Representative Ajong.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 7432, Proclaiming the Rights and Obligation of Patients Providing a Given Mechanism thereof by Representatives Duterte, Yap Eric, and Yap Edvik.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 7433, Promoting Access to Quality Legal Education by Providing for Free Tuition and Early School Fees in State Universities and Colleges by Representatives Duterte, Yap Eric, and Yap Edvik.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 7434, Strengthening the Information Disemination and Education Campaign About the Anti-Hazing Act 2018 by Representative Tevez Jose.
To the Committee on Basic Education Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 7435, Amending Title I, Chapter III of the Family Code Prescribing Additional Grants for Announcement by Representative Kuwa.
To the Committee on Population-Family Relations.
House Bill 7436, Establishing the Commission on Advancement of Women in Science Engineering and Technology Development by Representative Kuwa.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 7437, Converting Hinango Elementary School in Barangay Hinango Magsaysay Occidental Mendora into Hinango Integrated School by Representative Tariela.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7438, Strengthening the Civil Aviation Authority of the Philippines by Representative Rodriguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 7439, Establishing the International Cruise Ship Port and Appropriate Facilities in Abasaklan by Representative Jaresco.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 7440, Declassifying Legitimate Children into Marital Children and Legitimate Children into Non-Marital Children, hereby amending the pertinent provisions of the Civil Code of the Philippines, the Family Code of the Philippines, and other pertinent laws by Representative Kahayon Uy.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 7441, Increasing the Maximum Value of Family Home by Representative Kahayon Uy.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 7442, Declaring September of Every Year as a National Bullying Awareness and Prevention Month by Representative Kahayon Uy.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7443, Institutionalizing the Pambansang Pabahay para sa Pilipino Program by Representative Robes.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 7444, Strengthening the Governance Management of the Philippine Science High School System by Representative Yu Divina Grace.
To the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 7445, Declaring December 23 of Every Year as National and Working Holiday in Sindangan, San Puanggal dal Norte, to be known as Araw na Sindangan in celebration of its founding anniversary by Representative Labad Labad.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 7448, Providing for a National Framework for Senior Citizen Care of 2023 by Representative Ko Pilar.
To the Special Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 7449, Prescribing the Income Classification of Provincial Cities and Municipalities and Authorizing the Department of Finance to Adjust the Income Brackets and Undertake Regular Income Recognition of Local Government Units by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 7450, Granting Women in the Counter side greater access to institutional credit and technical assistance amending the Women Development and Nation Building Act by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 7451, Establishing Apex Hospitals in every region of the country by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 7452, Establishing the Barangay Integrated Development Approach for Nutrition Improvement of the Rural Poor as a Linkage Program for all State Universities and Colleges and Community Colleges by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Rural Development.
House Bill 7453, Declaring the Cape Hoya Door Lighthouse located in Burgos and Locos Norte a Tourism Destination by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 7454, Granting additional benefits to Filipinos and Tinayans recognizing Octogenarians and Nonagenarians by Representative Farinas.
To the Special Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Bill 7455, Strengthening the Commission on Higher Education by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 7456, Strengthening the Field Offices of the Komalek by Appending and Creating Certain Positions by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 7457, Promoting Corporate Farming and Providing Incentives Therefore by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 7458, Creating the Department of Economics and Development Planning by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization, the Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Bill 7459, Establishing an Enterprise-Based Education Training Program by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 7460, Establishing the National Center for Chariatic Health and Research Institute, Creating Regional Chariatic Specialty Centers and the DOH Train Hospitals by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 7461, Establishing a Separate Facility for High-Level Offenders by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 7462, Authorizing the Use of Incinerators in the Disposal of Solid Waste by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 7463, Institutionalizing Industry Cluster Based Programs and Projects Through Inter-Local Cooperation People's Participation by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on People's Participation.
House Bill 7464, Standardizing the Retirement Benefits of Judges, Judges, and Judicial Officers Conferring with Judicial Nang Salary and Privileges by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 7465, Declaring the Lamming Coffee Plantation located in Barangay Dopita, PD, Ilocos Norte a Farm Tourism Destination by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 7466, Strengthening Local Sports Programs to Develop Youth Athletes, Young Athletes by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 7467, Declaring Defining the Maritime Zones Under the Jurisdiction of the Republic of the Philippines by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Bill 7468, Mandating the Coverage of Compulsory Insurance of Overseas Philippine Workers by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 7469, Strengthening the Philippine Cup Insurance Corporation by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 7470, Regulating the Use of Bicycle as an Alternative Mode of Transportation, defining the Rights of Bicycle Rider Establishing requisite Infrastructure Facilities by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 7471, Strengthening the Price Support System for Agricultural Produce by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 7472, Prohibiting the Private-Lending Companies from Collecting Loan Payments of Government Employees through Automatic Payroll Deduction by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Terminaries.
House Bill 7473, Enhancing Protection for Women in Maze Halls in Jails and Correctional Facilities by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 7474, Declaring the Singing Bell Tower located in the City of Lawag, Ilocos Norte a Tourism Destination by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 7475, Establishing at least one SPED Center for each School Division and at least three SPED Centers in big school divisions for children with special needs, creating for the purpose the Bureau of Special Education by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7476, Mandating Swimming as a Subject in the K12 Basic Education Curriculum and an Integral Part of the Overall Strategy to Reduce the Incidence of Death from Drowning During Natural Calamities of Recreational Aquatic Activities by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7477, Expanding the Coverage of the tertiary Education Subsidy by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 7478, Creating the National Museum of Filipino Women by Representative Farinas.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
Resolutions. House Resolution A20, Congratulating Commanding Carlos Edriel Yulo for Winning in the 2020-2023 Federation International, the Gymnastic-Artistic-Gymnastics World Cup Series Cup Held in Doha, Qatar by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution A21, Requesting Minda of Development Authority to Facilitate the Conduct of feasibility Study for the Mount Apo Wild Depresyon Conservation Center by Representative Kawagdan.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Resolution A22, Commemorating the Nemulag Festival in the Province of Sambales on April 28 to 30, 2023 by Representative Konghun.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Solution A23, Condemning the Laser Pointing Incident Last February 6 at the Ayuning Show in the West Philippine Sea Directed against BRP Malapaskoa by Representative Konghun.
To the Special Committee on West Philippine Sea.
House Solution A24, Expressing Profound Condolences on the Untimely Death of John Matthew Salilig by Representative Konghun, Uwaminal, Escudero, Ortega, and Kuwa.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution A25, Calling on the Appropriate House Committee to Conduct an Investigation on Death of Negros Oriental Governor Roel Degama and Five Others by Representative Konghun, Uwaminal, Escudero, Ortega, and Kuwa.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution A26, Urging the DFA to Establish a Consular Office in San Jose Occidental Mendora by Representative Tariela.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Solution A27, Congratulating Commanding the Philippine Athletes who Won in the 7th Asian Jiu-Jitsu Championship Held in Bangkok, Thailand last February 2023 by Representative Tolentino.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Solution A28, Congratulating Commanding the Philippine Athletes who Won in the 14th Asian Lawn Bowls Championship Held in Ipoh, Malaysia by Representative Tolentino.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Solution A29, Calling for an Investigation Regarding the Oil Spill From and Singing of Mount Princess Empress by Representative Barsaga.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution A30, Congratulating Mr. Rowan Lasalita Celestra for Being Chosen in 2022 Outstanding Public Officials and Employees Ordangan Lang Bayan Award by Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Profession Regulation.
House Solution A31, Directing the Government of the Republic of the Philippines through the Diplomatic Efforts of the DFA to Retrieve from the United States of America the Doctrina Cristiana 1593 as an Important Philippine Historical Artifact Belongs to the Filipino People by Representatives Mercado Revilla, Revilla Brian, and Revilla Ramon Cholo.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Solution A32, Organizing the Philippines-Sangri Parliamentance Friendship Group by Representative Labad Labad.
To the Committee on Interparliamentary Relations and Diplomacy.
House Solution A33, Organizing the Philippines-Sangri Public Parliamentance Friendship Group by Representative Labad Labad.
To the Committee on Interparliamentary Relations and Diplomacy.
House Solution A34, Recognizing the Efforts of Various Organizations and Volunteers to Support the Search and Retrieval Operations for the Cessna plane crash on February 18 in Albay by Representative Salceda.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Solution A35, Requesting the Committee on Transportation to Conduct an Investigation on the Sufficiency of Our Maritime Laws and Safety Standards and Other Related Measures to Ensure Accountability of Sea Carriers Involved in Maritime Accidents by Representative Umalin.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution A36, Urging the Committee on Disaster Resilience to Conduct an Inquiry on the Country's Earthquake and Disaster Preparedness in Order to Ensure the Safety and Disaster Resilience of Local Communities by Representative Tan Keith Maica.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution A37, Expressing the Profound Condolences of the House to the Family of Honorable Roel Ardiga, Governor of Negros Oriental by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Dalipe, Libana, and Marcos Romualdes Yedamari, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Rules.
Messages from the Senate. Message dated March 6, 2023 informing the House of Representatives that the Senate on even date passed Senate Bill 1604.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
Message dated March 6, 2023 informing the House that the Senate on even date passed Senate Bill 1850.
To the Committee on Agrarian Reform.
Message dated March 7, 2023 informing the House of that the Senate on March 6, 2023 passed Senate Bill 1849.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
Communications. Letters and Emails from Certain Local Chief Executives and Government Officials Transmitting to the House Copies of Their Letters and Emails dated June 30 and October 6, 2022, January 2030, 31, 2020, 23, and February 1, 2, 14, 2025, 2023, of various LGUs on their reports on fund utilization and status of program project activity implementation relative to local government support fund and Bayonahan grant to city municipalities and provinces for certain months 2022.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 30, 2023 of the National Allegation Administration Regional Manager Submitting to the House a copy of the Status of Infra Procurement Implementation as of January 15, 2022 in the first district of Later.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Letter dated February 3, 2023 of the National Youth Commission Chairperson and CEO informing the House that their report on the utilization of Sanguniang Kabataan Mandatory and Continuing Training Fund Statement of Appropriations, Allotments, Obligations, Dispersements, and Balances as of December 31, 2022 was posted on their website. Transparency seal on February 3, 2023.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated February 17 and 22, 2023 of the BSP Acting Bank Officer and Bank Officer Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services Transmitting to the House duly certified copies of certain BSP issuances and circular letter.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Terminaries.
Committee Reports. Committee Report numbers 399 to 406 submitted by the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 7498, 7499, 7500, 7501, 7502, 3093, 7503, and 7504 respectively. Committee Report Number 407 submitted by the Committee on Trade and Industry and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 1171. Committee Report Number 408 submitted by the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, the Committee on Ways and Means, and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 7505. Committee Report Number 409 submitted by the Committee on Natural Resources and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 7506. Committee Report Numbers 410 and 412 submitted by the Committee on Public Works and Highways and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 7508 and 1043 respectively. Committee Report Number 411 submitted by the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and House Solution
Committee Report Number 411 submitted by the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and House Solution Number 839. Committee Report Number 413 submitted by the Committee on Health on House Bill Number 6772.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 7240 under Committee Report Number 327 as con- um, and for this purpose, may I ask the Secretary General to read the directed title of the bill?
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 7240, a knock rightsizing the national government to improve public service delivery and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that it is in the period of debate and sponsorship. I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Government Reorganization, the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores of Second District, Bugdnon, be recognized.
The Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores from the Second District, Bugdnon is recognized.
Madam Speaker, we are ready for the interpolation.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
There is some motion to open the period of interpolation. Is there any objection? The Chair hears now. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from Act Teacher's Party List, the Honorable France El Castro, for her interpolation.
The Honorable France Castro is recognized for her interpolation.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader. Thank you. So bago po ako mag-proceed dun sa ating interpolation on, on House Bill uh, 7240. Uh, dahil ngayon po ay March 8, Madam Speaker, gusto ko po kayong batiin ng happy, uh, Working Women's Day at sa ating mga colleagues na narito, happy Working Women's Day para sa ating lahat. At mabuhay po ang mga kababaihang, at mabuhay po ang lahat na mga kababaihang nakikibaka para sa magandang bukas para sa bansang Pilipinas.
Happy Working Women's Day to everyone.
Thank you, uh, Madam Speaker.
Yes, you may proceed.
Uh, so would the distinguished sponsor yield some of, uh, these representations questions?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I would gladly answer the questions of our distinguished colleague from the Act Teacher's Party List.
Yes, thank you, uh, uh, Sir Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor. So kung tama po 'yung aking ano no, 'yung aking pananaw about this, uh, this bill on rightsizing, ang ibig po bang sabihin nito ay, um, pagtatanggal, pagdaragdag, uh, pagbabawas na mga government employees natin?
Madam Speaker, the rightsizing program of, uh, this bill is not just to remove or reduce the number of employees, but is actually to streamline the processes of, uh, government services so that we can have a better or effective delivery of the services to the people.
So pag sinabi po nating streamline, uh, Madam Speaker, ang, ang pakiwarin natin doon ay talagang ano no, parang kumbaga, uh, downsizing, hindi siya rightsizing, kundi pagbabawas pa rin. Kung ini-streamline natin, halimbawa, so ira-rationalize natin 'yung mga positions, uh, in the government, ah, ito po, ito po ba ay sa executive branch lang or kasama po ang legislature and judiciary?
Yes, Madam Speaker, it only covers the executive branch of the government.
Yes, so ibig sabihin po, uh, Madam Speaker, uh, kung streamlining, ang lagi pong, um, binabanggit ng ating mga government employees kapag ito po ay streamlining, basically, nangangahulugan po ito ng pagbabawas or, um, retrenchment sa mga government employees. Sa tama po ba yon?
Again, Madam Speaker, this is not just to, uh, reduce the number of employees. In fact, the rightsizing re- program is trying to review all the other functions of the other agencies and strengthen, uh, create new offices if there need be to, uh, for, to, um, complete if there are gaps that are, uh, that are happening in the delivery of these services.
Yes, kung magkakaroon po tayo ng rightsizing, uh, Madam Speaker, so ito po ay merong implikasyon sa employment, uh, sa mga positions, sa ating mga government employees, at siyempre, effect, um, may implication din ito sa salary. So ibig sabihin po ba kung magkakaroon ng rightsizing, the, um, the current SSL 5 would also be overhauled or would also be revised?
Madam Speaker, the rightsizing program will give the executive branch of government the authority to review and thoroughly, uh, study the functions and the staffing patterns of all, uh, the agencies that will be covered by the, uh, Committee on the Rightsizing of the Executive Branch, and it will give them the opportunity to review, including, uh, the, the salaries or, uh, of our government workers.
Yes, um, kasi po, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, uh, when we had this, um, a hearing in the ICT, uh, in the ICT Committee on ICT, so may mga positions po sa government na hindi, hindi fit doon sa mga pangangailangan ng, ng department. So ganun din po 'yung halimbawa, uh, sa Department of Education, may mga position na kailangan na ma-fill up, na wala naman doon sa staffing pattern or nasa salary standardization low 5. So tama po ba 'yung aking, um, opinion na ito ay maapektuhan din? So kasama ito doon sa, uh, pag-uusap natin on rightsizing?
Tama po, uh, it will include, uh, the review of all those things, Madam Speaker.
Sige, uh, thank you po, uh, uh, Madam, Madam Speaker and distinguished sponsor. So in expect din po ba natin na may mga merger ng mga agencies and mga institutions sa ating gobyerno?
Yes, Madam Speaker, there will be mergers whenever there is a need to merge two or more offices, no? And, uh, there will be consolidation also. There might be splitting if, uh, the Committee on the Rightsizing of the Executive Branch would determine that there is also a need to split an agency.
Okay, so 'yung merger, consolidation, and splitting of the different, uh, of government agencies and institutions, so ano po 'yung pagakaiba ng, um, nitong mga to, itong mga terms na ito, 'yung merger, splitting, and consolidation? Kasi merger and consolidation, parang, parang the same lang to, so ano po 'yung difference if there is?
As, uh, defined in the, the bill, Madam Speaker, a merger refers to the combination of two or more organizational units whereby the identity of one is retained and the other is abolished or deactivated. Consolidation, on the other hand, Madam Speaker, refers to the dissolution of two or more organizational units to form a new unit.
Okay, so pag sinabi nating merger, is it within the agency? Or consolidation, is it within the agency or federating iba, ibang agency?
Under this bill, uh, Madam Speaker, it will, uh, review all the agencies together, not on a per-agency basis because there are some functions that are done, uh, by one agency and another agency also doing similar functions. That's why in, uh, this rightsizing, uh, bill, Madam Speaker, we're reviewing it on a sectoral or on a whole-of-government approach, Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you, um, um, distinguished sponsor. How about the, the LGU? Are they included here in our proposed bill, the LGUs?
In this bill, Madam Speaker, the LGUs are not included, but they are encouraged to also do their own rightsizing bill, taking into consideration the provisions of this bill, Madam Speaker.
Okay, okay, so that is clear, no? So this bill, proposed bill, is for the, uh, executive branch only? And the LGUs are encouraged? Okay. So under, under Section 5 po, governing principles of the bill, Section 5H states that the government rules, procedures, requirements shall be rationalized to reduce the regulatory burden on citizens, businesses, and other stakeholders, as well as the administrative burden on the part of the government. Tapos, in Section 5 po, letter B, uh, sinasabi din po that the government shall establish a conducive policy environment to encourage active engagement of private sector and civil service society or organization in the production and delivery of goods. And another section, Section 6, authority of the president to right-size the operation of the executive, executive branch, which states that scale down, phase out, eliminate, um, or discontinue function programs, projects, or activities that could be better carried out or undertaken by the private sector or have already been devolved to the LGU consistent with the governing principles provided. So dun sa nabanggit kong mga sections, uh, Madam, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, so can the sponsor confirm na it is the, ano no, it is the objective of House Bill 70 to 40 in, in, in rightsizing or streamlining the, the, the go- the government services? So would it mean more privatization of our services?
Not necessarily, Madam Speaker. Uh, the bill only mentions that for those that can be carried out or that is, are actually carried out by the private sector, then it will be given to the private sector. And that those that are already being performed by the local government units in accordance with the Local Government Act will also be, uh, devolved, uh, uh, to the local government units, uh, to give them greater, um, uh, authority, uh, over these matters.
Yes, kasi sinasabi rin dito, di ba, kung, kung magiging more efficient ang private sector, so ipapasa sa private sector 'yung services?
That is, if, Madam Speaker, there are things that may be determined by the Committee on the Rightsizing of the Executive Branch that are, uh, going to be better performed by the private sector. That is possible.
Yes, and also kapag merong mga, uh, if we're going to hire mga contractual or job order na mga employees, ay papayagan din ba nitong, nitong bill natin on rightsizing?
On the issue on, uh, job orders and contractual, uh, contract of service, uh, employees, Madam Speaker, are not, uh, tackled in this bill because, uh, this only, uh, refers to the regular employees, uh, or permanent employees of the executive branch.
Okay, so, uh, a word of caution lang, uh, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, kasi kapag may ganito na provision, at siyempre, kung, uh, 'yung mga agency, halimbawa, ay magwa- mag-aavail na mga private sector services, liban pa doon sa, uh, binibigay nung ating ahensya at ang ating mga government, uh, agency, uh, would, this would entail additional cost and all, and of course, uh, this would also, um, would also, um, make the private sector not accountable? Tama po ba yon? Magintil tayo ng more, uh, more expenses and cost, budget, and also how about the question of accountability, just in case?
Uh, Madam Speaker, this bill, uh, actually wants to, uh, give better services to the people in a least, uh, expensive way. As much as possible, we want to make sure that we are efficient and effective in delivering the services without, no, using much of our limited resources of the national government.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Sponsor. Under 5, under Section 5H, so can the sponsor explain kung ano po 'yung intent nung, uh, quote, reduce regulatory, regulatory burden on citizens, businesses, and other stakeholders, as well as administrative burden on the part of the government, unquote? So pwede po ba niya ipaliwanag kung ano ibig sabihin nito?
Madam Speaker, this provision particularly deals with how the people get, uh, their processes in the government service done, no? That is why precisely the, uh, anti-red tape, uh, the ARTA Authority, no, is a part of the Committee on the Rightsizing of the Executive Branch to ensure that during the strategic review, we will be, uh, going through the processes and procedures of all the government agencies to make it easier for the transacting public to transact with the government agencies and offices.
Okay, uh, thank you po, uh, uh, Mr. Sponsor, kasi pag sinabi nating reduce regulatory burden on citizens, so ang ibig sabihin nito, and so on, as sinasabi natin, mas edediregulate ba ang serbisyo sa ating mga government agencies?
Not necessarily, Madam Speaker. It is to reduce the number of persons that you would need approval maybe, reduce the number of persons that would need to sign on documents, and, uh, speed up the process of getting, uh, permits and other things, uh, that are needed from the government agencies that will be subject of the review.
Okay. Uh, basically, um, Madam Speaker, sa mga experience po natin sa mga agency, no, especially in the government hospitals, basically, 'yung mga, halimbawa, 'yung mga laboratory, 'yung mga diagnostic test, dahil wala doon sa mga hospitals, so 'yung mga pasyente ay napipilitan, napumunta doon sa mga private entities. So kung magkaka-ganun at ito ay mapapasa, so 'yung po bang mga practices na yon ay, ay maiiwasan na? Kasi kung, kung totoo, 'yung sinasabi nitong bill na ito na talagang ma-improve 'yung services sa ating mga government agencies, eto nga, example nga nito, 'yung hospitals, uh, makikita niyo, halimbawa, sa PGH and other national hospitals na walang mga facilities doon sa mga hospitals na yon, so napipilitan ang pasyente na pumunta sa mga private sector providers noong mga laboratory na kailangan nila. So paano natin ma-insure talaga na magiging efficient 'yung, uh, mga services ng ating government with this bill?
Uh, Madam Speaker, the government hospitals and the medical and allied medical services are excluded from the coverage of this bill. But in theory, the, what be, i- in, in response to your concern that we would like to try to give services that are better, that is the whole spirit of the, of this bill, that in reviewing the procedures and processes of the government agencies, we will, uh, correct all of these things that are, uh, possible to correct so that we can have a more efficient and effective delivery of the services to the people.
Um, did I hear it right? Exempted ang mga hospitals at, at health sectors?
Yes, Madam Speaker. This is, uh, this, uh, this, the, the rightsizing bill does not cover the education sector, the, uh, health sector.
Uh, in terms of staffing pattern, 'yung ibig sabihin, 'yung mga kinakailangan, pero, pero sa mga hospital, gagaya nga na sinasabi natin, kung walang mga specialist doon, dapat meron, di ba? Kung, kung, kung wala 'yung mga, uh, nag, nagkakaroon ng diagnostic test na may kailangan na specialist para doon, dapat magkaroon tayo ng mga, mga personnel. Kasi ang nangyayari, uh, halimbawa, sa PGH, um, magpapalaboratory ka ng ganito, ay wala kami kasing ganyan, kasi wala kaming mahire na specialist na magkoconduct nung test. So parang contraryan, dun sa sinasabi ng rightsizing, na magiging magkakaroon ng efficient, kasi sa ngayon, ang kalagayan nga, uh, tingin namin hindi eficiente doon sa health sector. So sa, sa mga ganyang ano, dapat meron siyang, ano no, meron siyang exemption. So dapat magdagdag, magdagdag, di ba, ng mga, ng mga personnel that would cater to those needs na wala doon sa hospital?
Madam Speaker, I was informed by the DBM that, uh, for medical and allied medical services, they have, they are performing a separate review of the processes and the staffing patterns of our hospitals. But that is not included in this particular bill, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so hindi sila included dito sa ating, ano no, dito sa ating proposed bill, pero, don't you think halimbawa 'yung ni-race natin na, na, na situation, especially sa ating mga hospitals?
I would agree with, uh, um, the distinguished representative of Act Party List.
I would agree na 'yung mga education sector, 'yung mga medical health workers natin sa hospital, hindi sila kasale doon sa, kumbaga, marerevamp or hindi sila kasale doon sa, um, ma-streamline. Kailangan pa nga natin more teachers, uh, education personnel, tsaka more health workers po dun sa ating mga hospitals and other health institutions na, na dapat ay ma-consider din na maibigay, kasi sinasabi rin during our, ano no, during our hearing sa, sa DO, as a health, example, kailangan nila ng mga ganitong mga personnel, pero wala, wala 'yung mga ganung personnel, so kailangan ma-consider natin 'yung mga kailangang mga personnel na dapat nailagay natin dun sa ating mga hospitals.
Uh, the primary purpose of this rightsizing bill is to ensure that, uh, we use less government resources in delivering these services so that the resources that could be saved could actually be applied to other services or other sectors that need these additional resources, like as you've mentioned, Madam Speaker, the health and the educational sector.
Okay. Um, thank you, uh, distinguished sponsor. So dito po sa paano ka lang national government reorganization program, ay... So dito po sa paano ka lang national government reorganization program, ay sana no, mabawasan 'yung ano no, 'yung, kumbaga, 'yung reliance doon sa mga private sector at i-improve 'yung efficiency ng ating mga government agency, do you agree?
I agree, Madam Speaker, that in everything, we would try as much as possible to ensure that the government is effective, responsive, and efficient in delivering the services to the people.
Okay, thank you po. So now let's go to the, ano no, to the rightsizing process. So there is a, ano no, a committee on rightsizing the executive branch, o 'yung tinatawag nating CREV, at kalakha ng mga powers and functions and responsibilities ay narito at nasa committee. So can the sponsor confirm na ang approach ay top-down ang gagawin sa proposed reorganization? Kasi nabasa natin dito sa provision on the creation of CREV, mukhang national in scope ito. So from, ibig sabihin, 'yung recommendation is from top to down?
It's top-down and whole-of-government approach, Madam Speaker.
Ah, sige. From top-down, so ang ibig sabihin, ang recommendation manggagaling dito sa CREV, tama po ba?
Yes, the CREV will conduct their strategic review and study of the government agencies concerned, Madam Speaker.
And how about 'yung, si sinasabi niyo, 'yung strategy na whole-of-the-government approach, ano po bang ibig sabihin nun?
Because it will not be on a per-agency basis, Madam Speaker. It will be sectoral or whole-government.
Okay, so tinanong ko po yon dahil sa mga nakaraang reorganization act, or 'yung tinatawag nga ng ampating mga government employees na mga, ano no, rationalization, the recent was the rationalization, na inabot ko pa when I was a teacher. So ang nangyari doon, parang per-agency ang recommendation, kung ano-anong mga personnel ang kailangan. Pero dito sa proseso natin ngayon, na whole-of-the-nation approach at tsaka 'yung top-down, so paano ang magiging proseso niyan? Kung, eto no, makikita natin 'yung bumubuo ng CREV, Executive Secretary as Chairperson, Secretary of DBM, Secretary of NEDA, Chairperson of CSC, Director General of Anti-Red Tape Authority. So paano po 'yung magiging proseso nito na kung top-down ang recommendations? So 'yung approach, so sila 'yung magaano, sila 'yung magre-recommend, kung ano 'yung mga position na dapat tanggalin, na dapat dagdagan, wherein, di ba, sa experience during the previous reorganization, magmumula dun sa agency 'yung recommendation nung mga pangangailangan sa personnel o pangangailangan na mabawas, mabawas ito mga position na ito? So paano po 'yung magiging proseso ng CREV?
Yes, Madam, Madam Speaker, that's correct. It will come from the Committee on the Rightsizing of the Executive Branch rather than from the agencies, because of, from what we have learned from the previous programs of the government, is that if the recommendations will come from the agency itself, there is more of a tendency to protect their own positions and own people, that the rightsizing could not be effectively or more efficiently done compared to this bill where it proposes that the committee look at it from the outside point of view, and including the hiring of specialists and consultants to help them in conducting the strategic review and study of the particular agencies that will be covered by this Rightsizing Bill, Madam Speaker.
So meron po bang study dun sa binabanggit niyo po na in the past, merong mga proteksyon na mga agency doon sa mga position? So meron po ba tayong basis doon sa sinasabi nating yon, Mr. Sponsor?
There was a termination report, but the conclusion that we could come from, we could see from how long it took the agencies to submit their recommendations was considered as one of the reasons why they wanted to do it differently in this Rightsizing Program, wherein it will now be the Committee on the Rightsizing that will determine the functions and procedures of the agencies that will be covered under this bill, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, distinguished sponsor, Madam Speaker, kasi itong, itong composition ng CREV is high level, so ang ibig sabihin yan, wala bang participation dito, 'yung mga government employees themselves, dahil sila nga 'yung maapektuhan dito? Kasi when I look at the composition, ano 'yung mga responsibilities, so no, no mention about the participation, even the federation or unions of the government employees? Kamay, halimbawa, sa mga teachers, CREV na lang 'yung magdedesisyon, kung anong mga position 'yung tatanggalin sa, o idadagdag doon sa DEP Ed, wala ba kaming participation doon, 'yung mga lower rank?
Madam Speaker, in the last paragraph of Section 7, it states, "In the spirit of transparency and participatory governance, the CREV shall consult the agencies concerned, accredited public sector unions, and other stakeholders relative to the implementation of the national government rightsizing program," Madam Speaker.
Ah, okay, so ibig sabihin, aside from CREV, there would be a subcommittee?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
And this subcommittee would be in per-agency?
Not necessarily on a per-agency basis, Madam Speaker. It does not say that it's on a per-agency, but the consultations will be on a per-agency basis also, Madam Speaker, as provided for in the last paragraph of Section 7 of the Rightsizing Bill, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so 'yung recommendation would be, will be coming from the agency through in consultation with the, ano no, with the public sector unions and other stakeholders relative to the implementation? Pero ano na tuwe, relative to the implementation na nitong, ano no, nitong bill o nitong law, ano po 'yung NGRP?
National Government Rightsizing Program, Madam Speaker.
At the implementation level na po yon, Madam Speaker? So ang tinatanong ko dito, before, kasi di ba, bago mag-decide kung ano 'yung mga position na dapat naidagdag o dapat tanggalin, wala po bang participation right from the start, 'yung ating mga government employees' unions? Kasi parang, kaparang ang nangyayari dito, Madam Speaker, parang nagawa na ito, ito na 'yung recommendation, ito na 'yung mga position, i-report niyo na lang doon sa mga union, so ito na yon. So asan dyan doon ang transparency and consultation, kung at the implementation level, sila magpa-participate?
Madam Speaker, Section 7 speaks of the creation of the Committee on the Rightsizing Executive Branch. It is not the implementation itself, but it is where the study and the strategic review is actually conducted, Madam Speaker. So it is from the start of the study where they are mandated under Section 7 to include the stakeholders and other public sector unions and the agencies themselves in the creation of the study, in the conduct of the study and strategic review, Madam Speaker.
With your indulgence, distinguished sponsor, san po nakalagay yan sa Section 7? 'Yung sinasabi niyo po na right from the start of this, ano no, NGRP, ay nandun na 'yung participation nung ating mga employees' union?
Because, Madam Speaker, Section 7 speaks of the creation of the Committee on the Rightsizing of the Executive Branch. It includes therein, Madam Speaker, their responsibilities, and that is again, to conduct the strategic study and review. And in the conduct of the strategic study and review, they are allowed to create subcommittees, Madam Speaker. And in the same section, Madam Speaker, it mandates them to include the agencies or to consult the agencies concerned, the accredited public sector unions, and other stakeholders, Madam Speaker.
So that means per-agency, your subcommittee? Kasi sinabi niyo po kanina, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, not necessarily each agency shall have this subcommittee, kasi if you are going to talagang have this consultation to the government employees and other stakeholders, so dapat per-government agency po yan?
Madam Speaker, the Section 7 does not say that the subcommittees are to be created on a per-agency basis, Madam Speaker. It just speaks that the CREV is authorized to create subcommittees, Madam Speaker.
So still maintain, ano, may opinion na talagang ang ating mga government employees ay doon na lang sila sa implementation, kasi no, no mention dito po, eh, no, right from the start? Kasi 'yung CREV pa rin naman dito eh, binidefine on Section 8, 'yung powers and functions of the Committee on Rightsizing of the Executive Branch. Kaya kung tinutukoy Madam Speaker na ating distinguished sponsor, itong letter C is to conduct studies on the mandates, function, program, projects, operation of different government agency, it is still the CREV? 'Yung magkoconduct nung mga studies?
Yes, Madam Speaker, it's still the CREV that will conduct the studies.
So tama po ako na 'yung mga government employees' union ay hindi kasale dito sa, dun sa, right from the start, hindi sila kasale?
Madam Speaker, I beg to disagree. Again, Section 7 specifically states that they should be consulted, Madam Speaker.
Sige, so kung sinasabi po ng ating distinguished sponsor, Madam Speaker, ay nasa Section 7, 'yung participation po nung ating mga public sector unions, so hindi po specified dito eh, from the start, na sila ay kasale doon sa mga consultation? Kasi nakalagay dito, and other stakeholders on line 15 and 16, relative to the implementation of the NGRP, hindi naman kasama doon 'yung mga preparation or 'yung mga consultation, kaugnay doon sa mga positions or whatever na magcreate? So wala po doon eh? Implementasyon na sila kasale?
Madam Speaker, the implementation of the NGRP starts from the creation of the CREV, Madam Speaker. So I do not see the point as to why it's not from the start, because the Section 7 deals with the creation of the Committee on the Rightsizing of the Executive Branch, Madam Speaker. And that actually starts the ball rolling for the entire NGRP bill. The implementation starts from the creation of that committee, Madam Speaker.
So hindi pa rin pa ako ma-convinced doon. Siguro kung 'yan na ilalagay natin sa IRR, na kasama 'yung mga government unions right from the start talaga? Kasi pagimplementasyon, halimbawa, kung ito na 'yung batas, gagawa na ng IRR, so kasama na doon 'yung mga government employees? Pero 'yung preparation, 'yung pag-iisip ng paano gagawin itong, ano no, itong rightsizing, it's a pera doon 'yung mga government employees?
Again, Madam Speaker, I would beg to differ, Madam Speaker. Section 7 is clear and unequivocally states that they should be consulted, Madam Speaker.
May I move for a minute's suspension, Madam Speaker?
Session suspended.
Madam Speaker?
Session resumed. The Honorable France Castor has recognized to continue her interpretation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So ang sinasabi ko lang po dito, Madam Speaker, doon sa participation nung ating mga public sector unions, 'yung ating mga government employees, teachers' unions, na makasama sila doon sa every step of the way, dito sa rightsizing na batas natin? Dahil alam naman natin, Madam Speaker, na meron naman din talagang, ano no, batas tayo, na government employees should be consulted in all policies, laws, or whatever that would affect them. So yun 'yung sinasabi natin, na batas na po yon, na 'yung ating mga government employees and government, uh, public sector unions should be consulted in all, ano no, in all levels, in doing policies or whatever. But the distinguished sponsor assured me that that would be included in the IRR.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay. I'll go to my next point, Madam Speaker, on the, still on CREV, okay? Sinasabi po dito, no, 'yung bubuon nung CREV ay 'yung five-man committee, including the Civil Service Commission, NEDA, Department of Budget and Management, at... Sinasabi din later on that there would be a subcommittee, whether it is within the agency or not, ay magcreate so that the government employees' union should, will be consulted. So ano po 'yung timeline ng consultation ng CREV sa lahat ng ahensya na mga accredited na mga unions and other stakeholders? Just in case kung ito po ay maipapasa, meron po ba tayong timeline nung mga consultation? Kasi during our past experience doon sa rationalization and reorganization, parang iba-iba din 'yung timeline per agency? So meron po bang fixed na timeline?
The entire Rightsizing Program has a timeline of three years, Madam Speaker. From the time that the bill is approved and becomes law, then the committee has actually three years to conduct their study, do their consultations, and present their recommendations to the president for his approval.
Yes, so 'yung timeline ng mga consultation within three years?
The entire program, Madam Speaker, is to be done.
So the entire program, including, including 'yung mga implementation?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
So would that, would that jive with, for example, suppose na magkaroon tayo ng another salary standardization law? Or six? Kasi ngayon, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, we all know that 2023 is the last tranche of salary standardization law five. So kung three years yon, so ano po 'yung ibig sabihin nun? So ibig sabihin nun, 'yung mga creation ng mga positions by that time, ay paano po it magdejive ito? Halimbawa, kung magkaroon tayo ng SSL five or SSL six or amendments sa mga salaries na mga government employees?
Madam Speaker, while, that could be considered when the CREV conducts its strategic review and study, Madam Speaker, specifically, especially so that they would be in a deeper review of the processes of, the processes of all the government agencies that will be covered by this bill, Madam Speaker. So I hope that also will be considered in their strategic review and study.
Yes, so mahalaga rin po na ma-consider yon, Madam Speaker, kasi sa pagre-review natin na mga staffing pattern and different positions in the government, dapat ito ay nakaano na rin doon sa salary, di po ba?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I agree, Madam Speaker.
Yes, oo. At tapos, dahil meron mga subcommittees, Madam Speaker, itong mga subcommittees na ito, na siya rin... itong mga subcommittees na ito, na siya rin magbigay, for example, mga recommendations sa ating, ano, sa ating CREEB. So, would that suffice? 'Yung halimbawa, sinasabi niyong three years na 'yan, na kasi itong CREEB na ito, lahat ng mga government agencies ang iko-cover nito. So, would that a sufficient timeline doon sa three years na sinasabi natin? Kasama ang subcommittees?
Yeah, I hope, Madam Speaker, that it will be enough time for us to do an in-depth and strategic study and review of our processes and systems.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker and distinguished sponsor. Next. Dito po sa overall economic impact nitong, ano, nitong ating right sizing law. So, meron na po bang study on the economic impact noong mga government, ng government right sizing? Meron na po ba tayong, ano, meron na po ba tayong? Ano po 'yung, halimbawa, 'yung impact po nito doon sa unemployment rate, 'yung impact nito doon sa salary, at saka 'yung loss of income ng mga government employees? Meron na po bang impact assessment, study, or whatever, survey?
As of now, Madam Speaker, we have none. Because we do not know exactly how many positions will be affected if there will be any. Because how many will be merged, how many will be abolished, or what new offices will be created and what new positions will be added to the government bureaucracy? So, there is no figure as of the moment, Madam Speaker.
Yes, kasi, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, in our previous experience on reorganization, malaki po 'yung mga nabawas eh, na mga government employees. So, 'yung impact po niyan, sa sinasabi natin na income, unemployment rate, at saka 'yung income, impact nito sa ating economic, ano, economic impact on economic, ano, economic process ay talagang nagkaroon ng mga, ng ano talaga ng effect. So, for example, sa mga nakaraang rationalization, more than 600,000 'yung mga natanggal sa trabaho, ibig sabihin nun, whether they are retired, resigned, or nagkaroon ng mga packages for retirement, et cetera, and resignation. So, wala pa po ba tayong ganong study po?
I can only speak of the previous rationalization program, Madam Speaker. There were only 22,471 regular positions that were affected in that rationalization program. Only 22,471, not 600,000, as you mentioned, Madam Speaker.
Ito na po 'yung sinasabi ko, 'yung 600,000, na ito po 'yung kinover noong lahat ng reorganization. Kasi pang ano na yata ito eh, pang lima or pang apat na reorganization. So, 'yung latest po, 'yung rationalization, 21 to 22,000, tama po?
22,471, Madam Speaker.
Ah, nagkaroon po ng impact on employment, 21, 22,000. Pero dumami, 'yung mga COS at saka job order, tama po ba? So, ito bu-bwa ay naconsider doon sa reorganization?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Are we expecting more COS and JOS here? Or 'yung mga JOs natin and COS, as of now, ay ma-absorb dito sa right sizing?
The right sizing bill, Madam Speaker, speaks of the retooling of some government employees, particularly the contract of service and the JOs, so that they can be qualified for the regular positions that will be available in the government service, Madam Speaker.
Okay. And in the previous, ano, in the previous reorganization or rationalization? Halimbawa, I can speak of my experience sa DEEPED. Ang kincreate, 'yung mga nasa, ano eh, nasa higher level eh. Maraming mga na-create na mga lawyer, AOs. Samantalang doon sa baba, kailangan namin ang registrar, kailangan namin ang mga guidance counselors, kailangan ng, ano, ng mga utility workers. So, paano po ba ang magiging direksyon itong right sizing? Kasi tingin namin, hindi rational. 'Yung ginawang rationalization sa panahon ko, noong nasa, nang nagtuturo pa ako, no? Kasi more higher-ups ang kincreate na position instead of the positions na kailangan sa mga schools.
Madam Speaker, while I cannot answer for what positions will be created because that will be totally to the discretion or the findings of the CREEB. But that is precisely why we placed the Civil Service Commission as member of the CREEB, so that they will be in charge for the retooling and the retooling of the workers that will be affected, including contract of service and JOs that may be affected.
Yes, kaya ako po binanggit yun, Madam Speaker. Kasi kung hindi may involve 'yung mga stakeholders, lalong-lalo na 'yung mga government employees, kung ang magde-decision na lang ay 'yung sa top going down, so hindi nila talaga, ano, hindi nila talaga, hindi talaga makakakuha ng tamang sinasabi nating, ano, comments, suggestions na mga government employees. Kaya, halimbawa, sa DEEPED nun, ang na-create 'yung mga matataas na opisyal, eh, kailangan-kailangan namin sa school 'yung mga sinasabi kong positions sa inyo. Kaya napakahalaga, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, 'yung participation noong mga government employees, 'yung mga teachers. So, yun yun naman 'yung sinasabi natin. Kasi, baka mangyari na naman 'yung nangyari noong last time, na from top to down, ay talagang hindi magiging effective 'yung ating right sizing na gagawin.
Madam Speaker, I understand the concerns of the distinguished representative of Act Teachers' Party List. And I think that is why we have oversight, authority over the Committee on Right Sizing, so that we can check on the actions of how the bill or how the bill is being implemented on the ground, Madam Speaker.
Yes. That would be my last, no, Madam Speaker, sa aking interpolation. Sana ma-insure lang nitong paano kalang batas on right sizing, 'yung tamang mga posisyon na kailangan sa agencies. At saka, siyempre po, i-consider natin dito sa right sizing 'yung preference for our JOs and COS. Thank you, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Castro and Honorable Flores, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we respectfully request that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Loretto B. Acharon of the Lone District of General Santo City. We have with us today the city councilors of General Santo City and their companions. We have Councilor Richard Attendido, Councilor Dominador Lagare, Councilor Jose Orlando Acharon, Councilor Virginia Chongson Lido, Narli Attendido, Dr. Yvette Acharon, Edmar Matilianno, and Marvin Sedilia.
To the guests of the Honorable Loretto B. Acharon from the Lone District of General Santo City, the city councilors of General Santo City and their companions, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we also recognize the guests of the Honorable Faustino Ino D. V. of the Sixth District of Isabela. We have with us today Dr. Maria Rita A. Reario, Faculty of Isabela State University; Dr. Rale Viscara, Faculty of Isabela State University; Joanna Mae T. Danau Manaligod, Faculty of Isabela State University; Jessica C. Managuelod, Faculty of Isabela State University; and the fourth-year Bachelor of Public Administration students of the Isabela State University Etchague Campus.
To the guests of the Honorable Faustino Ino D. from the Sixth District of Isabela, guests from the province of Isabela, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to acknowledge the following visitors from the office of our Honorable Representative Daphne Lagon of the Sixth District of Cebu. We have the SB members of Cordova, Cebu, headed by Mayor Cesar Enverzo Suon. We have Deason Lorenz Lagon, Victor Tago, Francisco Ando Jr., Jerome Lipiten, Remar Baggio, Jose Wahing, Leodurico Casquejo Jr., Lemwell Pogoy, Chito Bentazal, Natilei Marie Thricitoi, Francisco Ando Jr., Victor Tago, SK Chairman Denise Carn Sumaganang, SB Secretary Paulo Tagseep. We also have SB members of Consolación Cebu with Alfred Francis Wano, Lalinka Vilio Yu, Leon Napuli, Mari Luccasul, Carlos Don Flores, Rando Quizon, and Salome Palang.
To the guests of the Honorable Daphne Lagon from the Sixth District of Cebu, the members of the municipal councils of the municipalities of Consolación, Cordova, and Tuburan, all from the province of Cebu, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we also recognize the guests of the Honorable Christopher Son Coco Yap from the Second District of Southern Leyte. They are from the municipality of Hinunangan and Hinundayan in Southern Leyte. First, the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Marian Pellín, Councilor Gary Comeling, Councilor Elmer Humangit, Councilor Ryan Fernandez, Councilor Socorro Alas, Councilor Dennis Pagpagitan, Councilor Eva Anriu, Councilor Consuelo D., Councilor Anna Kazon, Councilor Lerma Legumbay, Councilor Maria Edita Ramirez, Councilor Jeanette Abuyog, Councilor Crescente Pedrera, Councilor Raymundo Villamor, and Councilor Isra Albuna.
To the guests of the Honorable Christopher Son Coco M. Yap from the Second District of Southern Leyte, the visitors from the municipality of Hinunuangan and Hinundayan, Southern Leyte, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resume. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from the party list Kabataan, the Honorable Raoul Daniel Manuel, for his interpolation.
The Honorable Raoul Daniel Manuel is recognized for his interpolation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would the sponsor be willing to accept a few questions?
I would gladly answer the questions of the distinguished representative from the Kabataan party list.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, marami naman ngang napagtalakayan kanina sa naging interpolation ni Representative Franz Castro. 'Yung ilang katunungan lamang po natin eh, tungkol sa paano ba natin gustong patakbohin 'yung ating pamahalaan? Ang tanong po natin muna sa ating sponsor, tingin ba natin masyado ng marami 'yung ating government officials?
Madam Speaker, that depends, Madam Speaker. There are offices that are having too many employees. There are others that are incapable of performing the functions properly because they're understaffed or undermanned. And there are other agencies that have overlapping and duplicitous functions, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, habang dinidiscuss po natin 'yung right sizing, kasi pwedeng dalawa 'yung maging tunguhin talaga niya eh, dadami 'yung ating government employees o mababawasan 'yung ating government employees. So, between the two, Madam Speaker, alin doon 'yung mas likely kapag mangyari na ang right sizing?
Madam Speaker, I cannot answer that, Madam Speaker, because that would totally depend again on the results of the strategic study and review. But what we agree on is that, whatever their outcome may be, it should be a government that is more efficient, more effective in delivering the basic services to our people, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, sa opinion po ng representasyon na ito, kung magbabatay po tayo sa naging nakaraang mga pronouncements ng Department of Budget and Management, meron po kasi silang calculation na kapag maipatupadaw ang right sizing, makakatipid ang gobyerno. Ibig sabihin, mababawasan ang gastos. So, it implies magbabawas tayo ng ating government employees. Kaya, Madam Speaker, kung may ganong posibilidad, gusto ko na lang din i-compare 'yung data sa iba't-ibang mga bansa, ano. Batay po sa ILO with data from 128 countries. 'Yung Pilipinas po, it ranks 97th out of the 128 countries in terms of percentage ng kanyang population na nagtatrabaho sa gobyerno. Ibig sabihin po, sa Pilipinas, ang rate po natin ngayon 9%. So, 9% ng ating labor force ay mga government employees. Ang pinakamababa po doon sa 128 countries na yun ay 2% lamang. But if we compare the Philippines to the average noong 128 countries na yun, nasa 18%. So, kalahati lang po 'yung rate natin sa Pilipinas. So, I would like to suggest, Madam Speaker, na actually nga, kung may direksyon po tayo, paano palalong patatagin 'yung ating government offices by reinforcing 'yung ating human resource instead of reducing o ipasa sa private entities 'yung pagpapatakbo noong mga government functions? Kaya, with that, Madam Speaker, actually yun lamang 'yung ilan sa mga points natin, no? At again, pangunahin sa atin, dahil hindi naman po magkabanggaye, paano natin bibigyan ng decent employment 'yung ating workers at paano natin na i-improve 'yung pagpapatakbo ng ating gobyerno? So, yun lang, Madam Speaker. Salamat sa ating sponsor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Manuel, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize the guests of the Honorable Jose Francisco Kiko Benitez of the Third District of Negroes Occidental? We have today the victorious city district officials. We have Honorable Mayor Javier Miguel L. Benitez, Vice Mayor Abelardo D. Bantog III, Attorney Lindolf de Castro, Honorable Teresita S. Bartolomé, Honorable Dalen T. Jofilénia, Honorable Ermi B. Millán, Honorable Dino Jose María O. Acuna, Honorable Walito T. Undar, Honorable Dexter A. Deasis Jr., Honorable O. D. R. Malaga, Honorable Richard Julius S. L. Sablan, and Honorable Shina C. Bagaforo.
To the guests of the Honorable Jose Francisco Kiko Benitez from the Third District of Negroes Occidental, Mayor Avi Benitez and Vice Mayor June Bantog and the councilors of the Third District of Negroes Occidental, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
There's a motion to close the period of sponsorship and debate. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
There's a motion to open the period of amendments. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we proceed with the consideration of individual amendments.
There's a motion, is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Loreto B. Acharon from the Lone District of General Santo City for his individual amendment.
The Honorable Loreto Acharon is recognized for his individual amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to propose certain amendments to House Bill Number 7240. There are a few individual proposed amendments that I am going to propose, only 10. First of which is on Section 3, on definition of terms, page 3, lines 11 to 15. I propose or move to delete the entire paragraph, sub-paragraph D, and enluder of replace with the following to read. Section D, "The activation refers to the act of making dormant or non-operational organizational unit by phasing out its functions or transferring them to other units or discontinuing the provision of resources." "An organizational unit is rendered dormant or non-operational if it is defunded or operation is terminated, but its formal existence continues. A deactivated organizational unit is devoid of any activity, personnel, financial, and physical resources."
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Madam Speaker.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
There's a motion to approve the said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Second, Madam Speaker, on the same page, lines 32 to 33, I move to delete the whole provision and enluder of replace with the following to read. "Staffing pattern refers to the approved staffing complement of an agency. It shows the number of authorized positions by class in occupational group for each organizational unit within the agency."
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Madam Speaker.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
There's a motion to approve the said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Third proposal for amendment is on Section 4, coverage, page 4, line 9. Between the comma and delete, I move to delete the phrase "Commission on Human Rights."
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Madam Speaker.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
There's a motion to approve the said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Proposal Number 4, Madam Speaker, on the same section, I move to insert the new second paragraph, which if inserted or allowed, will read, "In recognition of the important role of certain government positions in Philippine society, the following positions shall be excluded in the coverage of this act: 1. Teaching and teaching-related positions in elementary, secondary, technical vocational schools, state universities, and colleges, and non-chartered tertiary schools; 2. Medical items in hospitals and other medical facilities servicing agency clients; and 3. Military and uniform personnel in the Department of National Defense, Department of the Interior and Local Government, Department of Transportation, Department of Environment and Natural Resources, and the Department of Justice."
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Madam Speaker.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
There's a motion to approve the said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Proposal Amendment Number 5, on Section 5, Governing Principles, page 5, line 8, I move to replace the word "simplified" with the word "streamlined."
What does the sponsor say?
Madam Speaker, we accept the amendment.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
There's a motion to approve the said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
On the same page, line 12, I move to delete the word, the word rather, "A" between the words "us" and "means."
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Madam Speaker.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
There's a motion to approve the said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Proposal Number 7, Madam Speaker, on Section 6, entitled "Authority of the President of the Philippines to Rightsize the Operations of the Executive Branches," page 6, line 5, between the words 2 and 3, organize. I move to insert the word "create" and a comma.
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Madam Speaker.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
There's a motion to approve the said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Proposal Amendment Number 8, Madam Speaker, on the same section and page line, on the same section and page lines 16 to 23, I move to delete the whole provision and enluder of replace it with the following provision to read. "Subject to evaluation and favorable recommendation of the Committee on Rightsizing the Executive Branches, abolish agencies based on any of the following grounds: 1. The functions are already redundant or no longer relevant or necessary or can be better undertaken by another entity. The agency is no longer achieving the objectives and purpose for which it was originally created. Continued operation is not cost-effective since it does not generate the desired level of outputs and outcomes, vis-a-vis the resource funds or inputs. Or the agency has already become non-operational or dormant or has outlived its purpose."
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Madam Speaker.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
There's a motion to approve the said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Proposal Amendment Number 9, Madam Speaker, on the same page, lines 21, 24 to 25, I move to delete the phrase "Commission on Human Rights."
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Madam Speaker.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
There's a motion to approve the said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Proposal Number 10, Madam Speaker, on Section 23, page 13, line 2, I propose and move to delete the phrase "Commission on Human Rights."
What does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendment, Madam Speaker.
What does the House say?
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
There's a motion to approve the said amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
That is all, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Acharon. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to introduce individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendment.
There's a motion to close the period of amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 7240.
Those who are in favor, say aye. Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill 7240 is approved on second reading with amendments.
Thank you.
Majority Leader. Congratulations.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
I move that we consider House Bill Number 7210 under Committee Report 322 as submitted by the Committee of Revision of Laws. Copies of this bill have been previously distributed to the members, and I request therefore that the Secretary-General be instructed to read the title of the bill.
The Secretary-General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill 7210, an act declaring February 7 of every year as National Religious Freedom Appreciation Day in celebration of the World Interfaith Harmony Week of the United Nations.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
There's a motion to open the period of sponsorship and debate. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that the chairperson of the Committee of Revision of Laws, Representative Edward Vera Perez Maceda, be recognized via Zoom to begin his sponsorship of the measure.
The Honorable Edward Vera Perez Maceda is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I apologize for not being the plenary because I am heading a very important technical working group. But I'm honored to sponsor House Bill 7120, which seeks to promote the culture of peace and harmony between and among various faith and religions in the country. The celebration of National Religious Freedom Appreciation Day historically started when the UN General Assembly was held on the 23rd of September 2010. And the World Interfaith Harmony Week was proposed by King Abdullah II of Jordan. And subsequently, on October 20 of the same year, the UN adopted the proposal in the first week of February, was designated as the World Interfaith Harmony Week. Following such history, House Bill 7120 declares the 7th day of February of every year as a working holiday as the National Religious Freedom Appreciation Day. And this is in line with the freedom to choose any form of religion as enshrined in Article 3, Section 5 of the Philippine Constitution to all Filipinos. So in line with this, I'm honestly asking my esteemed colleagues for the urgent passage of the bill. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Maceda, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Alana Samantha T. Santos of the 3rd District of Cotobato for her sponsorship speech.
The Honorable De Los Santos is recognized. The Honorable De Los Santos is recognized. Sorry, the Honorable Samantha Santos is recognized.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, you may proceed.
Our fundamental law highlights the freedom to exercise and enjoy any religious profession or worship without being subject to any form of discrimination. Being the current belief system in a country where it's predominantly Christian, prejudice against the minority still exists. Interfaith initiatives has been proven crucial to the promotion of peace, cooperation, amity within and outside the country, as well as the development of moral, spiritual, and intellectual capability to uphold and enhance human dignity. In the Philippines, a executive order number two-six, six-two-six, series two thousand seven, created a National Committee, Committee on Interfaith Cooperation, to consolidate, rationalize, and ensure the consistency of the country's policies and position in various interfaith initiatives and forums in and outside the country. This was later unamended by Executive Order number seven-one-four, series two thousand eight, renaming the NCIC as a Council on Interfaith Initiatives, which shall be the highest policy setting by the country, for the country's interfaith activities and involvement here and abroad. It most, it most also emphasized the Philippines' play and effective, an active role in pursuing interfaith advocacies and platforms, both in the country and abroad, even in success hosting an annual World Interfaith Harmony Week in support of the UNGA Resolution six-five-five, adopting the, adopted on November twenty-three, two thousand and ten. In this light, it is imperative for us to establish a harmonious relationship between and among various faiths and religion, promoting a culture of peace, non-violence, creating and establishing a mechanism for interfaith dialogues. With this, the institutionalization of an annual celebration of religious freedom in a country is necessary to promote culture, respect, reconciliation, and solidarity, dismantling the culture of war and violence, and building a harmony and compassion among different religious beliefs. That is all, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Santos, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation and debate.
There's a motion to open the period of interpolation and debate. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I now move that we close the period of interpolation and debate.
There's a motion to close the period of interpolation and debate. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we open the period for individual and committee amendments.
There's a motion to open the individual and committee amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no individual or committee amendments, I now move that we close the period of amendments.
There's a motion to close the period of amendment. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we vote on, uh, House Bill numbers, on second reading, on House Bill number seven-two-one-nine, under Committee Report number three-two-two.
Those who are in favor, say aye. Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill seven-two-one-zero is approved on second reading.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill number seven-zero-zero-six, as contained in Committee Report number two-nine-eight, submitted by the Committee on Local Government. And for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary-General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
The Secretary-General is directed to read the title of the measure.
House Bill number seven-zero-zero-six, an act providing for the automatic income classification of provinces, cities, and municipalities, amending for the purpose Section Eight of Republic Act Number seven-one-six-zero, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of nineteen-ninety-one as amended.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that the period of sponsorship and debate has been terminated. Madam Speaker, in line with this, I move that we open the period of amendments.
There's a motion to open the period of amendments. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the sponsor of the measure, the Vice-Chairperson of the Committee on Local Government, the Honorable Representative Steve Chong Bian Solon from the Lone District of Sarangani.
The Honorable Solon is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no individual nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
There's a motion to close the period of amendments. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill number seven-zero-zero-six.
Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill seven-zero-zero-six is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Thank you.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider bills under the calendar of business for Thursday and Friday. Madam Speaker, pursuant to our rules, allow me to put forth an omnibus motion for the consideration of the following. House Bill number seven-three-one-six, Committee Report three-four-four. House Bill number seven-three-nine-seven, Committee Report three-seven-nine. House Bill number seven-three-nine-eight, Committee Report three-eight-zero. House Bill number seven-four-one-two, under Committee Report three-eight-five. House Bill number seven-four-zero-six, under Committee Report three-eight-three. House Bill number seven-three-two-two, under Committee Report three-four-six. House Bill number seven-three-five-eight, under Committee Report three-five-three. House Bill number seven-three-five-nine, under Committee Report three-five-four. House Bill number seven-three-six-zero, under Committee Report three-five-five. House Bill number seven-three-seven-seven, under Committee Report three-six-five. House Bill number seven-three-eight-zero, under Committee Report three-six-six. House Bill number seven-three-eight-eight, under Committee Report seven, uh, three-seven-one. House Bill number seven-three-eight-nine, under Committee Report three-seven-two. House Bill number seven-three-nine-zero, under Committee Report three-seven-three. House Bill number seven-three-nine-one, under Committee Report three-seven-four. House Bill number seven-three-nine-two, under Committee Report three-seven-five. House Bill number seven-three-nine-four, under Committee Report three-seven-seven. House Bill number three, uh, seven-three-nine-five, under Committee Report three-seven-eight. And lastly, House Bill number seven-three-nine-nine, under Committee Report number three-eight-one. I so move, Miss, uh, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary-General is directed to read the title of the said bills.
House Bill number seven-three-one-six, an act establishing the Baguio City High School for the Arts and the Operating Fundster Four. House Bill seven-three-nine-seven, an act establishing in the city of Ligao, Province of Albay, a college of veterinary medicine of the Beagle University, to be known as the Beagle University College of Veterinary Medicine and Operating Fundster Four. House Bill seven-three-nine-eight, an act establishing the Southern Duson Stage University, Catanawan Campus, College of Veterinary Medicine and Operating Fundster Four. House Bill seven-four-one-two, an act establishing a college of medicine in the Visayas State University, located in the city of Baybay, Province of Leyte, to be known as the Visayas State University College of Medicine and Operating Fundster Four. House Bill seven-four-zero-six, an act amending Sections twenty-three, fifty, fifty-two, and fifty of Republic Act Number eleven-six-eight-nine, otherwise known as the revised Charter of the City of Baguio. House Bill seven-three-two-two, an act declaring a parcel of land located in the municipality of Nueva Valencia in the province of Gimaraas, a protected area with a category of natural park under the National Integrated Protected Area System, to be referred to as the Taklong and Tantong Group of Islands Natural Park, providing for its management and operating fundster four. House Bill seven-three-five-eight, an act establishing community forest in Brankays, Balubal, Gugman, FS, Catanico, Indahag, Tablon, and Nagusan, in the Second District of Agayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, and operating fundster four. House Bill seven-three-five-nine, an act establishing an arboretum in the premises of the Community Environment and Natural Resources Office in the municipality of Colambogan, Lanau del Norte, to be known as the Colambogan Arboretum, and operating fundster four. House Bill seven-three-six-zero, an act establishing an arboretum in the municipality of Tagolowan, Lanau del Norte, to be known as the Mighty Cave Park Arboretum, and operating fundster four. House Bill seven-three-seven-seven, an act declaring Pinal Falls, located in the municipality of San Nicolas, Province of Pangasinan, a tourism destination. House Bill seven-three-eight-zero, an act declaring Dicat Falls, located in the municipality of Umingan, Province of Pangasinan, a tourism destination. House Bill seven-three-eight-eight, an act declaring Huluga Caves One and Two, located in Barangay Indahag, Agayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, as ecotourism site. House Bill seven-three-eight-nine, an act declaring Kalapat Cave, located in Barangay Dan Solihon, Agayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, an ecotourism site. House Bill seven-three-nine-zero, an act declaring Cuéba de Oro, located in Barangay Bayanga, Agayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, an ecotourism site. House Bill seven-three-nine-one, an act declaring Langag Cave, located in Barangay Dan Solihon, Agayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, an ecotourism site. House Bill seven-three-nine-two, an act declaring Makahambos Cave, located in Barangay Bayanga, Agayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, an ecotourism site. House Bill seven-three-nine-four, an act declaring Bolotohan Cave, located in Barangay Indahag, Agayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, an ecotourism site. House Bill seven-three-nine-five, an act declaring Calaberac Cave, located in Barangay Indahag, Agayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, an ecotourism site. House Bill seven-three-nine-nine, an act declaring Mambuaya Cave, located in Barangay Mambuaya, Agayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, an ecotourism site.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session for five minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider the respective explanatory notes as the sponsorship of the said measures.
There's a motion, is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate on the said local bills, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation.
There's a motion to terminate the period of interpolation. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments and approve the committee amendments, if any, as contained in the respective committee reports of the aforementioned bills.
There's a motion to open the period of amendments for the aforementioned bills. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
There's a motion to terminate the period of amendments. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session for five minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we acknowledge the honorable guests from Misamis Oriental of Representative Bambi Imano, Representative Christian Unabia, Representative Lordon Suwan, uh, be recognized for today, Madam Speaker, uh, Madam Speaker. Um, we have, from the municipality of Libertad, we have Vice Mayor Sharon Balangan, Kagawad Lilian Gallogo, Kagawad Elmer Agonal, Kagawad Nolasco Marba, Kagawad Pasita Bonane, Kagawad Kirino Iliana, Kagawad Felix Ratunil, Kagawad Miguel Hoario, Kagawad Manuel Sofocado, Kagawad Fed Rizil Iliana. From the municipality of Hasaan, we have Vice Mayor Janus Ray Astor, Kagawad Adrian Salcedo, Kagawad Felipe Estacio Junior, Kagawad Gracia I Edades, Kagawad Francisco P. Oi Juanco Junior, Kagawad Andres P. Omok, Kagawad Hera Cleo Adahar, Kagawad Rodenio Zayas, Kagawad Rico Valdon, Kagawad Charlito Eugenio, Mr. Marlon Cabello, Mrs. Lilia Omok. From the municipality of Inital, we have SK Chairman Kathleen Opel, Federated President Josephine Rachel Carlos, SK Chairman Eugene Omandam, SK Chairman Roedui, SK Chairman Chris Gala, Gala Rosa, SK Chairman Janel Hunyo, SK Chairman Joselle SK Chairman Joselle Gala-Rosa, SK Chairman Jason Balansag, SK Chairman Maria Fe damalan, SK Chairman John Louis Labajo, SK Chairman Fati Angelo Bagares, SK Chairman Darwin Kitoriano, SK Chairman Thierso Jr. Hong Hong, SK Chairman Efren Balaba, SK Chairman Ramir Jr. Kaburatan, SK Chairman Jojdrin Abragan, SK Chairman Missami Bagares. Madam Speaker.
To the guests of the Honorable Christian S. Unabia from the First District of Misamis Oriental, the Honorable Attorney Lordon Suon from the First District of Cagayan de Oro City, and the Honorable Bambi Imano from the Second District, Misamis Oriental. To their guests from the Municipality of Libertad, Municipality of Jasaan, Municipality of Inital, and from Cagayan de Oro City, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the aforementioned bills on second reading.
Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it, the aforementioned bills are approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mrs. Madam Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill 7370 as contained in Committee Report 360, submitted by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education. Madam Speaker, copies of the bill have been previously distributed to the members. I request therefore that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the said measure without prejudice to the insertion into the records of the text thereof.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 7370, An Act Creating a Tripartite Council to Address Unemployment, Underemployment, and the Job Skills Mismatch Problem in the Country and Appropriating Funds Therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
There is a motion to open the period of sponsorship and debate, is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, the Honorable Mark Go, be recognized to begin sponsorship of the measure.
The Honorable Marcus is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. My esteemed colleagues in this august chamber, it is my privilege and honor to sponsor House Bill 7370, Under Committee Report 360, entitled "An Act Creating a Tripartite Council to Address Unemployment, Underemployment, and the Job Skills Mismatch in the Country and Appropriating Funds Therefore." Madam Speaker, based on demographic data from recent studies, about a quarter of the unemployed in our country are college graduates. Despite the efforts of the Commission on Higher Education to improve access to quality higher education as well as promote relevant higher education programs in the country, Madam Speaker, we are faced with the sad reality that there is still a shortage of college graduates in the fast-growing service sectors, and yet, there are unemployed or underemployed graduates in these sectors. This was proven by the Philippine Institute for Development Studies in its 2016 study entitled, "Are Higher Education Institutions Responsible to Changes in the Labor Market?" Madam Speaker, it is truly lamentable that the education sector constitutes the majority of the unemployed and underemployed in our country. Our education curriculum, as shown by recent data, is no longer responsive to the demands of industries and businesses operating in this global economy. Madam Speaker, while the Chair has constantly encouraged incoming students to enroll in courses like agriculture, engineering, information technology, teacher education, and health services, it can be observed that in reality, only 25% of college graduates finish, or students finish, a degree in business administration, and only 3% of graduates studied agriculture. The PDIS report also showed that about 40% of employed Filipinos have academic credentials beyond what is needed in their jobs. These individuals, however, earn only 5% or more for finishing their studies despite being relatively overeducated for their positions. The prospects for employment are even much bleaker for senior high school graduates who enrolled in college but were unable to complete their programs. This drives us to the point, Madam Speaker, that although education is said to be a great equalizer, the current situation in the country speaks otherwise. Obtaining a degree from a higher education institution in this country nowadays no longer guarantees sure jobs and sometimes even leads to frustration, if not futility, because the jobs available in a highly competitive labor market do not match the educational skills of the college students. This is especially true, Madam Speaker, for industries requiring highly specialized skills, which unfortunately some of our college graduates do not possess. Apparently, the problem of job skills mismatch, Madam Speaker, is one of our longtime challenges in developing this country's employment situation and optimizing the skills, talents, and competencies of our working class. It is also a crucial concern when it comes to the proper utilization of the country's budget that goes into the education sector. Madam Speaker and my esteemed colleagues, we can agree that it is indeed a potential threat, especially in the new normal and fourth industrial revolution, which is characterized by rapid technological progress, slow economic growth, and aging societies. Thus, careful and robust analysis is needed to reach the right policies, programs, and solutions to these problems. This measure, Madam Speaker, mandates the Commission on Higher Education to create a tripartite council, which shall be a regular coordinating body among the government, academy, and industry sector, with the primary task of monitoring employment, underemployment, and job skills mismatch, among others, and formulate policies and programs to address the job skills mismatch in this country. The bill also provides that the tripartite council, which shall be attached to the chair for administrative and budgetary purposes, shall be composed of representatives from the government, academy, and industry sectors. Madam Speaker, the bill directs the tripartite council to conduct an inventory, review, and evaluation of courses, academic programs, and curricula of public and private educational institutions and technical vocational institutions, as well as to assess the qualifications, skills, and competencies of students and graduates of higher education courses and technical vocational education and training. More importantly, the council can guide our HEIs and allow them to have a better understanding of the labor market, identify where the jobs are and what skills and competencies are required to fill these vacancies. Madam Speaker, we need the passage of this measure now more than ever. Surely, this will enable the country to address the problems of job skills mismatch, underemployment, and even unemployment, and ensure that our graduates will possess the skills that will match the needs of the demands of the industries. Hence, I humbly urge everyone in this chamber to join me in appealing for the immediate passage of this measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and my esteemed colleagues.
Thank you, Honorable Go, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resume, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration for House Bill 7370, as contained in Committee Report 360. So move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion, is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 7400, as contained in Committee Report Number 382, submitted by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure.
House Bill 7400, An Act Institutionalizing an Enterprise-Based Education and Training Program to Strengthen Technical Vocational Education and Training and Appropriating Funds Therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
There is a motion to open the period of sponsorship and debate, is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, the Honorable Mark Go, to begin his sponsorship of the measure.
The Honorable Marcus is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, and my dear colleagues. It is with pride and honor that I stand before this august chamber to sponsor House Bill 7400, Under Committee Report 382, which institutionalizes an enterprise-based education and training program to strengthen technical vocational education and training. Currently, Madam Speaker, the Technical Education and Skills Development Authority, or TESDA, implements its training programs via four training modalities. The most common or popular is the school-based training program implemented in technical vocational institutions. The second type of training is center-based, where programs are conducted in TESDA regional or provincial training centers and in the women's training center. The third one covers community-based programs for the poor and marginalized groups who do not have access to formal training. The last one, and yes, the least of them all in terms of participation rate, is the enterprise-based training modality, which is being implemented in companies or enterprises through apprenticeship, learnership, and dual training system. Madam Speaker, the Medium-Term National Technical Education and Skills Development Plan from 2018 to 2022 disclosed that TESDA's enterprise-based education and training program registered the least number of enrollees for the period 2010 to 2016, and had been on a declining rate from 2011 to 2016, despite being considered as the most effective Tibet modality. The NTASDP also reported that unlike institution-based trainings, there is a significant decline in the number of participating companies from 800 in 2010 to 348 in 2016, which also resulted in the gradual decrease of enterprise-based education and training enrollees over the year, with a slight improvement only in 2016 at 72,458 as compared to those in institutions-based and community-based delivery modes. Four years after the initial NTASDP report, Madam Speaker, or from January to December of 2020, TESDA noted that out of 5,807 enrollees for company-based apprenticeship all over the country, only 3,611 graduated, while for the dual training system, only 801 of 1,260 enrollees were able to graduate. Nevertheless, Madam Speaker, these figures already showed a slight improvement from the 2000-2016 data. For supervised industry learnership, Madam Speaker, the statistics seems a bit encouraging because 2,138 out of 2,338 enrollees enrolled the training program. Madam Speaker, one of the major reasons why there is a low turnout of graduates from enterprise-based education and training is the sad reality that companies participating and implementing these training are still very few. In 2022, there were 65 firms implementing apprenticeship all over the country as compared to 57 in 2021. For learnership, it's a tie of 60 for 2021 and 2022, with no implemented in Region 9 for both years. For dual training, there was an increase in the number of companies that participated from 14 in 2021 to 26 in 2022. Based on the results of TESDA's study on the employment of Tibet graduates in terms of training modes for the last decade, enterprise-based education and training graduates had the highest average employment rate of 68.9%, while those who were trained by an institution-based had the lowest average employment rate. Hence, Madam Speaker, there is a need to rationalize and strengthen the delivery system for Tibet through enterprise-based education and training to meet the demands and requirements of technologies, industries, and the world at work. And this can be done, Madam Speaker, by enlarging the scope and impact of enterprise-based education and training and elevating it as a dominant delivery mode through this legislation. Through the institutionalization and expansion of enterprise-based Tibet programs, Madam Speaker, we can help meet the demands of the economy for well-trained technical vocational manpower, develop and enhance the competencies of enterprise-based education and training workforce in a technologically changing world, and make training accessible to all workers by broadening opportunities and increasing the venues for enterprise-based education and training. Thus, I am soliciting your support, Madam Speaker, and the rest of our colleagues for the immediate passage of this measure. Thank you, and good afternoon.
Thank you, Honorable Go, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 7400, as contained in Committee Report 382. So move.
There is a motion, is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resume, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, with leave of the House, I move that we open the Privilege Hour.
There is a motion to open the Privilege Hour. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Arlin Di Brosas of the Gabriela Party List to avail of the Privilege Hour.
The Honorable Arlin Brosas is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. Uh, this is for the International Women's Day. Madam Speaker, mga kapwa kinatawan, ipinapaabot ng Gabriela Women's Party ang pagbati sa lahat ng kababaihan saan mang panig ng mundo. Ngayong pandahig digang araw ng kababaihang anak pawis. Happy International Women's Day. Araw natin ito, mga kabaro at kaibigan. At sa araw na ito, patuloy nating itinatala ang di matitinag na pagtindig ng kababaihan para sa miting lumaya sa anumang uri ng diskriminasyon at pagsasamantala. We pay tribute to Filipino women in various fields who have broken gender stereotypes and who have leveraged female power, talent, and grit to accord our country recognition in the global stage. Sinahayde Lin Diaz, Dali de Leon, Alex Ayala. Sila po sa ngayon ang mga kinikilala natin, no? Pero sa global stage, pero wag din natin kalimutan ang kasaysayan natin ng mga katulad ni Gabriela Silang, of course. Sa kasaysayan natin nila Melchiora Aquino at iba pa ng mga kababaihan na nakipaglaban para tayo ay hindi masakop ninuman. Sila ang mga kababaiyang Pilipino na matagumpay, na nagtala ng husay at galing ng kababaihan at umukit sa kasaysayan. Likewise, we pay tribute to the millions of nameless Likewise, we pay tribute to the millions of nameless, faceless Filipino women who try their best to make ends meet for the family in the midst of alarming inflation rates, depressed incomes, and massive joblessness. Juggling domestic and economic roles while facing the features of patriarchy and misogyny on a daily basis illustrate the multiple burdens which we women face. Sabi nga, ang pagiging babae ay pamumuhay sa panahon ng digma. Para sa lahat ng kababaihan at kapanalig, buwan natin ito. At hindi tayo papayag na matulak lang sa gilid ang ating mga usapiin at panawagan sa buwan na ito. We claim our rightful space in this chamber, even if insidious anti-people measures such as charter change or cha-cha have made headlines as this month kicks off. Muli, hindi tayo makakapayag na mapag-iwanan at kalimutan ang mga panukalang batas na mag-aangat sa katayuan ng kababaihan at magwawakas sa abuso at karahasan. Malayo tayong nakatanaw sa isang lipunang tunay na malaya, isang lipunang kumikilala sa pagkakapantay-pantay, isang lipunang hindi ikinakahon ang babae sa palamuti, sa mga tabloid at telebisyon, isang lipunang hindi naguodyo ng karahasan at abuso. Kaya naman, higit pa sa pagpasa ng mga batas ang hamon sa atin. Kailangan natin ng komprehensibong pagbabago sa kung paano tinitingnan ang kababaihan sa lipunan. Patuloy tayong magiging boses ng laksa-laksang aping kababaihan sa munting espasyo na mayroon ang representasyon na ito sa kongreso. Muli, pagbati sa lahat ng kababaihan mula sa Gabriela Women's Party. Abante babae. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Brosas. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech of the Honorable Brosas to a proper committee for appropriate action.
There's a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we close the privilege hour.
There's a motion to close the privilege hour. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize the guests of Representative Zia Alonto Andiong, of the First District of Lanau del Sur, and Representative Riaser Alonto Balindong of the Second District of Lanau del Sur. Our visitors are the Plenary Affairs Division of the Bangsa Moro Parliament. We have Astor Zahira Antenor, Juana Asi, Benji Ayub, Janina Mamadra, Mohamed Maarob Candao, Norquisa Kallo, Saydamen Lingkoob, Saddam Benito, Zakina Matalam, Marian Guanzon, Farhadina Dalandas, Amiel Antenor, Razul Campania. From Subatra, we have Chrisel Capistrano, Attorney Reginald Pastrana, Norol Haya Haron. From the Mindanao Development Authority, we have Lieutenant Colonel Romel Breones, PAF retired, Consultant Miss Norsen Almadalsu, and Miss Hessa Maria Palina.
To the guests of the Honorable Zia Alonto Andiong from the First District of Lanau del Sur and guests of Representative Yaser Alonto Balindong from the Second District of Lanau del Sur, the Plenary Affairs Division of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament and the representatives from Supporta sa Bangsa Moro Transition, welcome to the House of Representatives.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize the guests of House Speaker Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes, Representative Yeda Marie Ramaldes, Representative Jude Asidre of Tingog Partelis, and Representative Jerry Boy Espina Jr. We have Board Member Grace Casill, Biliran Naval Mayor Gretchen Espina, Kaibiran Mayor Rhodesa Revita, Pulaba Mayor Humphrey Olimba, Miripipi Mayor Joseph Keingoy, Biliran Mayor Maria Cabrales, Almeria Mayor Richard Haguros, Kawayan Mayor Manolo Ruby, Kaboghagan Mayor Gemma Adobo. Madam Speaker.
To the guests of the House Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Ramaldes and Representative Yeda Marie K. Ramaldes, Representative Jude A. Asidre of Tingog Partelis, and Representative Jerry Boy Espina of the Lone District of Biliran, welcome to the House of Representatives.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 340 in Committee Report 367 and request the Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure.
House Resolution 340, a resolution congratulating and commending Police Lieutenant Colonel Salman M. Saad for winning the silver and bronze medals in the World Police and Fire Games 2022.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 340 under Committee Report 367.
There's a motion to adopt House Resolution 340. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution...
Can I repeat my... Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 340 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 211 under Committee Report 368 and request that the Secretary General read the title of the measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution 211, resolution congratulating and commending Police Staff Sergeant Maria Caress Sanabre Arnejo, who won three medals in various events in the World Police and Fire Games 2022 held in Rotterdam, Netherlands on July 22 to 31, 2022.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 211 under Committee Report 368.
Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 211 is hereby adopted.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 208 under Committee Report 369 and request that the Secretary General read the title of the measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure.
House Resolution 208, a resolution congratulating Police Master Sergeant John Vincent de La Penya for earning two medals at the 2022 World Police and Fire Games.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 208 under Committee Report 369.
Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 208 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution 837 in consolidation with House Resolution 815 and request that the Secretary General read the title of the measure.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution 837, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Honorable Ruell Ardegamo, Governor of the Province of Negros Oriental.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution 837 in consolidation with House Resolution 815.
Those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 837 is hereby adopted in consolidation with House Resolution 815. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, before we move on to the next item in our agenda, may we recognize and acknowledge the guest of Congresswoman Lollipop Uwano Dison and the persons of Mandawi City Vice Mayor Glenn Bercede, Mandawi City Councilor Marie Cortez Zafra, former Congresswoman Naos, Mandawi City Councilor Nerissa Sun Ruiz, Mandawi City Councilor Jesus Arcidia Jr., Mandawi City Councilor Cynthia Remedio, City Councilor Jennifer Del Mar, City Councilor Andrea Ikalina, City Councilor Oscar Castillo Jr., City Councilor Attorney Joel M. Seno, Mr. Jesse J. Zafra, Mr. Ian E. Chaves, Mrs. Patricia Ikalina, Mrs. Corazon Seno, Ms. Almira Barrios, Ms. Christine Kabahug, and Mr. Nixon Jojo Dison.
To the guests of the Honorable Emery Lollipop Uwano Dison from the Lone District of Mandawi City, welcome to the House of Representatives.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House Resolutions to the appropriate committees: House Resolution 786 to Public Order and Safety, House Resolution 790 to the Committee on Tourism, House Resolution 791 to the Creative Industry and Performing Arts, House Resolution 797 to the Banks and Financial Intermediaries, House Resolution 801 to the Committee on Transportation. So move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to refer the following House Resolutions to the appropriate committees. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, pursuant to our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following speeches to the appropriate committees: The speech of Representative Robes delivered on February 27, 2023 to the Committee on Youth and Sports Development; the speech of Representative Chua delivered on February 27, 2023 to the Committee on Metro Manila Development; the speech of Representative Castro-France delivered on February 27, 2023 to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture; the speech of Representative Andiong delivered on February 28, 2023 to the Committee on National Defense and Security.
There's a motion to refer the following speeches to the appropriate committees. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill Numbers 7210, 7363, 7370, 7387, 7393, and 7400 in House Resolution Numbers 211, 208, 340, and 837 as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
There's a motion. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we proceed with the Additional Reference of Business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills, resolutions on first reading, as well as communications and committee reports.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of bills, resolutions, messages, and committee reports.
Additional Reference of Business, Message from the Senate. Message dated March 6, 2023, informing the House of Representatives that on even date, the Senate-designated Senators Cynthia A. Villar, Aimé R. Marcos, and Riza Conteveras has conferred to the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill Number 1850 and House Bill Number 6336.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Reports. Committee Report Number 414, submitted by the Committee on Economic Affairs on House Bill Number 7525. Committee Report Number 415, submitted by the Committee on Tourism on House Bill Number 7528. And Committee Report Number 416, submitted by the Committee on Natural Resources and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 7529.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, on the part of the majority, I move that we elect the following members to the said committees: For the Committee on Aquaculture, Fisheries, and Resources, Members: Joey Salceda, Estrella Robert Raymond, Dan Fernández. For the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, as member, Congressman Dan Fernández. For the Committee on Climate Change, as members, Congressman Ron Salo, Congressman Jose Francisco Benítez, and Congressman Jose Manuel Alba. For the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability, as member, Congressman Brian Yamsoon. For the Committee on Information, Communication, and Technology, as member, Congresswoman Florida Robes. For the Committee on National Defense and Security, as members, Congressman Jose Álvarez, Congressman Dan Fernández. For the Committee on Natural Resources, as member, Congressman Brian Raymond Yamsoon. For the Committee on Population and Family Relations, as members, Congresswoman Maria Lucille Nava and Congressman Miguel Luis Villafuerte. For the Committee on Public Information, as members, Congressman Michael Morden and Congressman Brian Yamsoon. For the Committee on Science and Technology, as member, Congressman Dan Fernández. For the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms, as member, Congressman Brian Raymond Yamsoon. For the Committee on Transportation, as members, Congressman Dan Fernández, Congressman Brian Yamsoon. For the Committee on Visayas Development, as member, Congresswoman Janice Salimbangon. For the Committee on Women and Gender Equality, as member, Congresswoman Jervel Jinky Luistro. For the Special Committee on Basis Conversion, as member, Congressman Emigdio Tanwatko. For the Special Committee on Vehicle Recovery and Economic Development, as Vice Chairperson, Congressman Brian Yamsoon. For the Special Committee on Reforestation, as Vice Chairperson, Congressman Dante García. And for the Special Committee on West Philippine Sea, as member, Congressman Brian Yamsoon. So move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to elect the aforementioned members to the following committees. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other item left on our agenda, I move that we adjourn session until Monday, March 13, 2023, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Session is adjourned until March 13, 3 p.m. on Monday. 13, 3 PM on Monday.